Board, and I want to thank the PTA and Cherry Hill Elementary School for hosting this event. And thank you to the candidates for being willing to create a new school district. Let's get to Noah. So each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and then one minute to answer each question, and then two minutes to summarize. And we have Amy Bastian as our timer. And do the time limits. If we don't get to your question, then you can ask the candidates afterwards. And the order of answering, the Sterling first and Kara second. So Sterling, you get two minutes to introduce yourself.
Well, anything, thanks for having me. Really appreciate you taking the time out of your schedules to come and listen to Kara and I. I think it's important. One of the reasons that I'm running for school board is because we are really at an exciting point in our community's educational journey. We get the opportunity to begin and build a new school district. That comes around once in a lifetime. And so I think it's exciting, it's an exciting opportunity. I also believe that my background and skill sets and experiences actually are, bring things to the table that will allow me to contribute something positive to building a good, even an excellent educational system. A little bit of background about me, I'm from this area. I grew up in Orem, went to Westmore Elementary, Lake Ridge Junior High, attended Orem High School. My kids have gone to school here in Orem as well, and it's a community that we love. We love it dearly, and so I care what happens. Even though my youngest is almost out of the public education system, I care what happens for our community. I've been in our schools. I've invested time in them to be in the classrooms and to know what their needs are. I've served on the community council at Lake Ridge Junior High School and Mountview High School for over 10 years. And so I feel like I've got a sense of how the schools operate from a parent's perspective. I've also had to advocate for my children's learning needs and do so in a way that's professional because those who are providing the services are the ones that I'm advocating and negotiating with. My educational background is that I have degrees in economics, political science, statistics, biostatistics. All of those degrees point towards an appreciation for data. And I really value and appreciate the use of data in making decisions. That's a little bit about me. Thanks.
Okay. I also appreciate everybody being here. It's hard to take time on a rainy evening to come and be in the schools and do things for the kids. But nothing has ever been more rewarding for me. I have eight children. They all went here to Cherry Hill. I've been in the community for over 50 years. I also attended Westmore. I attended Vineyard and the Spencer Vineyard that used to be on State Street. I went to Lake Ridge, I went to Mountview High School. My kids have also attended Lake Ridge and Mountview High School. I have been heavily involved in PTA committees, PTA sponsoring events, all through Cherry Hill, Lake Ridge, and high school. I put together programs for Cherry Hill. I put together programs for the high school. I've advocated for facilities upgrades at the high school as well. My background includes, I started working at 16. By the time I was 17, I started getting promoted to management positions. I have worked in a lot of, I don't know what to call them. Anyway, the big retail type stores. I've hired people. I've been in the areas where you have to let them go. I'm able to organize committees and lead and delegate. And I think that with my skill set, I can go ahead and help create a district that is Israeli family-based and the parents and teachers and students will all be able to work together.
Thank you. Okay, Sterling, first question. What past experience best prepares you to serve on the new school board?
That's a great question. Kind of a hard one to answer because I think I have a lot of different experiences. So I'll point to a couple. One, I think my experience as a parent is first and foremost. As I mentioned, I've had to learn how to advocate for my children's needs. My two youngest children required special education services, so I've sat in over 30 IDPs. Knowing how to advocate for their needs while maintaining good relationships is a really positive thing. And I think that's a skill and experience that would benefit me on the school board. My experience professionally, I think, also provides me with some good experience and skill sets. I teach in BYU in the Department of Educational Leadership. I work with principals and district leaders all of the time. I understand educational systems. I also have done research in the schools. And so all of these experiences, I think, prepare me for making a good contribution to the new school district.
I have over 30 years of management experience and leadership positions that I've held. I have spent over that period of time serving on PTA committees, school committees. I've advocated for parents. I also have sat through the IDPs for my children who needed extra services. And it is truly a neat thing to watch the teachers pay so close attention to your particular child. And I believe that I can advocate for parents and be a good parent's voice in a new district.
Okay, Kara. What are the greatest assets in the new school district?
Some of the best assets that I particularly like in Alpine School District? We have many, starting with our teachers. We have assets in our parents, in our students, in our community. We are a family-oriented community of people. We want what's best for our children and their future. We are capable of coming together for the common good and making this district absolutely great. It is, like Sterling said, it's a unique opportunity for us to start from ground zero and make a positive influence on our kids and get back to a lot of the basic school curriculums.
Can you repeat that question?
What are the greatest assets in the new school district?
I do agree with Kara that probably one of my greatest assets are the teachers. I think teachers are always the greatest asset in the new school district because they're the ones who are interacting with students. And I think we've got some excellent teachers. I also think that in the new school district, we have the opportunity to, we also have really excellent leaders as well. I've worked with many of those leaders, and I think the leaders and the teachers really are committed to doing what's best for students. So I see that as real positive. I also believe that Alpine School District, despite what some have said, I think Alpine School District is very well-run fiscally. And we know how to do things well with as little money as possible. I've learned that unlike many other school districts across the state, we are taxing at the maximum. And that's given us some room to grow. Finally, I agree, our community is a great asset. And I think that's something that we can use to come together for building a new school district.
Okay, Sterling. Agenda item number one for the new school board will be to vote on who will be the board president and vice president. What should agenda items number two and three be?
That's actually easy. Agenda item number two has to be forming subcommittees, especially committees for job hiring. We've got to hire the right superintendent. And so we've got to come together and collaborate around what our vision for our new school district is. And having articulated what that vision is, we then need to build a job application to attract the right kind of superintendent. So that she or he can then attract the right leaders, all guided by the vision that the school district has set or the school board has set. And that's what actually makes this opportunity so unique. If you're elected to a school board that's already been in existence, you're inheriting a vision and momentum or a lack of momentum. We actually are at the outset. And we then have the opportunity and the responsibility to set that course for the new school district.
Agenda item number one for the new school board will be to vote on who will be the board president and vice president. What should agenda items number two and three be?
I also agree that it should be committees. We need to have, after we hire the superintendent, and we'll be creating a vision of what we want for our curriculum, where we want to start, whether we start with our basic core curriculum, math, English, spelling, you know, things of that nature. We also need to form committees. We need to know where our finances are. We need to know what options we do have. We need to form a finance committee. We need to form a student success committee so that we can provide the best outcome for our students coming through. And we can do that by having great members on these committees with the students as our focus.
All right, Kara.
I keep getting confused.
What key topics or information should be covered in an orientation for new board members?
I think finances one is a good one. And for new board members, they need to have an understanding of what the vision for the current members that are there have. If they're coming in after the fact, after it's been set up, I think it's important to make sure that everyone is on the same page so that we can move forward and not really have any pickups along the way. I think that it would be important for them to understand the finances. Sometimes that's a large learning curve of where the money's coming from, where the money's going, how we can get more money, things of that nature. I think that would be really helpful to any new school board member.
We don't have to take the full 60 seconds, do we?
No.
Good. All right. In an orientation meeting, I think it'd be really important that part of that conversation was around the roles and responsibilities of a school board in contrast to the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent. The school board needs to, as I understand it, needs to set policies and vision for the district. And it's the superintendent and the leadership team that needs to enact that on a day-to-day basis. And I think it's problematic if we don't understand what the respective roles are. So I think in an orientation, I would love to be working around our specific responsibilities as a school board as well as those for a superintendent. Second, I think it's really important, as Kara mentioned, that new school board members understand fiscally what the responsibilities and opportunities are, both in terms of expenditures as well as income.
All right, Sterling. When setting policies for the new district, which existing ASC policy would you prioritize keeping and which would you recommend eliminating?
Well, that's a good question. To be honest with you, I'm not as familiar with all of the day-to-day policies that ASC has in order to say which one I would specifically keep and which one I wouldn't. I could tell you that some of the things that Alpine School District is doing well is that I think they do prioritize teacher-teacher professional learning. And so that policy is one. If it is a policy, it's something that I would actually prioritize is to make sure that we continue to support and give teachers the resources to help them develop professionally. I also think that a policy, and again, it's hard to say that this is a policy, but one thing that I would like to improve upon is increase the level of transparency and communication between the school board and the community and parents. I think that one of the things that is really important in building and establishing trust, and so I would want to establish a policy where that is prioritized.
A couple of the policies that Alpine School District does have that I actually really like is the anti-bullying policy. I believe that each child should know that they can come to a board member, they can come to an admin, they can come to a teacher, and explain their situation and actually expect results. We've had this as a personal issue in our own family. And we have had amazing admins that have addressed the issue and taken care of it immediately. I also am really fond of the new self-love policy. I understand that that is a law, but whatever the case, I don't care how it came into play, I love it. I have talked to teachers, I have talked to children, they all love it. Oddly enough, the kids are good with it. It's less of a distraction. As far as eliminating, I don't have enough information yet for that.
Thank you. Okay, Kara. Recently, ASC posted a graphic about the feeder schools. Among the many issues facing the new district, what priority should feeder school patterns be for the new board to send superintendent?
Again, with feeder schools, being a new school board, I'm not sure how high of a priority I would place that. I don't have enough information to make it a high priority just sitting here at the table right now. However, I do think it has benefits. I went through, and I understand the pull that there is with two or three schools coming out of one school into another school. And it was hard to make up friends and things like that after leaving junior high. And we had friends that went to another school. With its benefits, it also has some disadvantages. And I would love to explore that as a board and see if that's feasible for us to do.
I'd like you to repeat that question so I make sure I understand all components.
Recently, ASC posted a graphic about the feeder schools. Among the many issues facing the new district, what priority should feeder school patterns be for the new school board and superintendent?
Yeah, I like that question because it actually ties to a bigger issue, and that is school boundaries. One of the things facing the new school district is to determine what are the, we know what the current school boundaries are. We also know that we're facing a $17 million deficit as we start in 2027, if nothing has changed. And so I think it's going to be really important for us to do a boundary study across the district. And then looking at that boundary study, that will then give us the opportunity to take a look at this issue of feeder systems. I think there are pros and cons to having a clean feeder system where all of the elementary feed into the same junior high, and then feed into the high school versus a mixed feeder system. There's pro and cons to both of them. And I think it'd be really important to talk to and solicit input from parents around that issue in consideration with the other issues that we're dealing with in doing the new district.
Sterling, during the transition phase, how will you keep all decisions student-focused?
That's actually a super important question because the whole purpose of an educational system is teaching and learning. And when an educational system loses sight of that, then they lose sight of their whole purpose of revenue. And so one of the things that I would prioritize is to commit as a board member, but then also work as a board completely, to always ask the following questions. How does what we are doing impact the student? How does it amplify the vision that we have for students, which is their success, both academic and their well-being? And in what ways might there be some unintended consequences? And I think if we continue to hold ourselves accountable for answering that question across the decisions that we're making, then I think we'll be able to make decisions that are fair.
Transition is always hard. With our transition phase, I believe it should be as simple as possible. My hope is that as far as for the academics and things like that, the kids really don't notice that there's much of a transition of taking over. We are forming the district for them, and we need to remember that that is what it's for. We need to remember that the parents also have a vested interest in this. It is our job as a school board to ensure that we work together, parents, teachers, board members, admins. I think we can all agree that the smoother we get things organized and moving forward, the more the students will feel prioritized and be able to have a much more success in their learning.
Kara. Have you started writing interview questions for the superintendent and business administrator applicants? Name one question you would like to ask each applicant.
I actually wrote that down, to be honest. One of the interview questions I would ask them is, how can you ensure honesty and transparency? What specific ongoing practices would you implement to foster a culture of open communication? And that would be my approach to, in regards to superintendent and business manager.
I think one of my first questions for the superintendent would be, tell me about instructional leadership and how that plays a role in your experience as an educator. And the reason I would ask that particular question is because, as I mentioned earlier, teaching and learning is the core business of an educational system. And instructional leadership is all about keeping that focus at the center of all decisions that are made. And so I would want to ascertain to what extent the superintendent has instructional leadership on the front of their mind. Not administration, instructional leadership with the focus on teaching and learning. On the business side of things, I would want to ask the business manager what their purpose in focusing on and being in education is. Because you've got to still keep teaching and learning in the administration as well.
Okay, Sterling. As a new school district, resources will be limited, and the board will need to decide which programs should be cut. What criteria should be used to decide which programs are most valuable for students?
That presumes that you would have to cut programs. And I'm not going to enter into this endeavor with the idea that we are going to cut student services programs. I think we need to look, if we do need to cut services, then I would look for cutting services in other ways, but not for programs. Specifically, those programs exist to benefit and bless the lives of the children. So special education, GT programs, DLI, those are all providing important learning opportunities for students across the board. And I'm, at this point, not willing to put those on the chopping block. I would, in terms of prioritizing though, talk with families and also with teachers and find out, are there programs that aren't certain those key ones that they feel would be less important than others?
In keeping with our core mission as a new school board, I would hopefully engage the stakeholders and use data for the students' needs. A transparent, priority-based budgeting approach is vital to ensure that every dollar directly supports the outcome of any program. So using that, I don't go into it either trying to put special programs on the chopping block either. My kids have participated in all of the programs that we have, and they've enjoyed them. It's made well-rounded adults. And so I would prioritize them by seeing what is working and what isn't working. And prioritize them that way and what is most beneficial for the kids.
Kara. Should parents be surveyed and included in the process of reading district calendars? And would you consider changes such as starting school in September?
I believe that they should be involved in putting together the calendars. They are the ones that are going to be responsible in getting kids to and from and helping them make sure that they're meeting what they need to accomplish at school. I don't have any opposition for not having the parents involved in that. What was the last part of that?
Would you consider changes such as starting school in September?
I would leave that open for a possibility. I'm open to starting in September, depending on how it affects the curriculum and so forth.
Yeah, I'm all for gathering information and data. And so I think that we are asking parents their opinion about schedules. It'd be important to use that information in determining and setting schedules. It's clear that there are multiple stakeholders that are impacted by a schedule. Teachers are impacted, teachers are impacted, you know, just the, yeah, there's multiple stakeholders. And so other considerations would need to be taken into consideration in making that decision. But including parents is a great thing because we're partnering with them. In terms of moving to September as a specific, sure. I mean, if there was a good rationale for that, it would also mean that we would probably end in June. And so you've got to get the days in there somewhere. So you'd have to weigh and the pros and cons of any start and because then there would be a corresponding stop time as well.
Sterling. What should the district do to improve school safety?
That's an important question because, as Kara mentioned earlier, it's really important that schools are a safe space for the students and for the teachers and all of the educators that are in the building. I firmly think that the district is doing quite a lot to ensure school safety. I really appreciate the fact that at Westmore Elementary, for example, this morning when I entered there, I had to enter through the office and then go around and check in. And I think that's pretty standard protocol in most of the, in all of the schools that I've been a part of. And I think that's an important thing. I think it's important that we are aware of the possible dangers. But I also think it's important that we don't overreact and alarm students with unnecessary precautions or policies.
I also like a lot of the safety measures that we've had implemented. I remember when the new system went in here at Cherry Hill, my youngest was here. And it was different to get used to, but I actually appreciated the fact that I got to show my driver's license when I walked in. The current measures, like I said, they're awesome. I like the locked doors during school hours. I think it's always important to keep evaluating the progression of the dangers out there and keep in mind new ideas and new upgrades that we might need. And do studies periodically to know that we're on the right track and keep those kids safe.
Kara. The Alpine Board of Education currently livestreams its meetings on YouTube. Would you support continuing this practice in the new school district? Or are there other methods you would recommend for keeping the community aboard?
Yes, we should continue. I, there's nothing else to say. We should. It's been great being able to watch it. If I can't make it to a board meeting, I love the fact that I can actually turn it on and watch it. Or if I'm busy, I can go back and watch it on the website. I think it's a phenomenal opportunity that we have, and with the technology that we have, why not?
I agree with Kara. I mean, there's absolutely no reason that I can figure out why we wouldn't continue to livestream our board meetings. livestream our board meetings. We have an opportunity to be transparent with the public and share our discussions, our policies, and our decisions with them, so I would absolutely support continuing to livestream them. I think transparency with the public and communication are, as I said, two areas that I think we can improve upon in the new school district. And I think it's valuable to find as many ways to communicate what we're doing and why we are doing what we're doing, and to solicit input to inform what it is that we're doing. So I think all of those things are important in moving forward in the new school district and communicating with parents, both other stakeholders as well.
Hey, Sterling. You and your fellow board members are attending Day on the Hill for school board members, which will be January 30th. What do you think will be the most effective thing to do to advocate for the new school district?
That's a great question. I think that it's really important to recognize that the state does have an impact on what happens at the local level. In fact, the reason why we have three districts is because the state passed a law that didn't allow Alpine School District to put a two-district split on the ballot. So it's important to recognize that the state's decisions and laws do impact what happens at the local level. So I would want to advocate at the Day on the Hill, one, to stop...well, that's negative, to allow us to make the decisions that are going to be best for us and to stay out of our way, and two, to increase their funding for the students, because I know that we are currently...we could use more money from the state to educate our students. So I'm glad to hear that.
I would advocate for more money. The kids, the teachers, they all deserve it, and they need it. We needed to provide their proper education for them. The teachers needed to provide for their classroom. They worked really hard, and they need to be compensated for what they do without having more on their plate with no compensation. I would...I think it is important for us to know how the state impacts our local school boards. I think it's very important to stay in contact with our state representatives, such as Cole Kelly is our representative right now. It is important to stay in communication with them, so that we know what's going on, what's being discussed, and things of that nature, so we know how it's going to impact us.
Kara, last question. What should the new school district be known for in 10 years from now?
This is my favorite question, to be honest with you. I've actually thought about this, and I would be over the moon happy and just thoroughly excited if I see the kids come out of our district with an ability to be critical thinkers for themselves, that they will be forever learners, and that they will be able to just thrive as adults. That would be just an awesome thing for me to see our kids come out with.
How do you argue with that? I too...I would like to be known in 10 years as a school district that prioritizes students' learning as well as their well-being, and that that's evident in all of the decisions that are being made. I also would like to be known as a district that we value learning, not only the learning of students, but learning within the organization, and that we model ongoing learning for the teachers, for the leaders, and for us as school board members. We don't have all of the answers, and so we've got to be learners as well. And I think if we're a district who can take new information, respond in appropriate ways to new situations, that's what I would like to be known for, in providing that kind of an excellent opportunity for our students.
All right, Kara, you're up first. Tell us why everyone should vote for you.
I have a lot of time. I'm excited. Being a new school board member, I can devote my time back to going into the schools. With this being a smaller district, I'm able to spend more time and visit each one of the schools. I can go to them if needed, two, three times a week, just to see and make sure things are going okay. I love watching the kids grow and learn. It was always a great life for me, to have emotional brothers. To come into the schools and see how the teachers are able to touch my kids. I am very passionate about school and the education that my kids receive. See? I have the management experience, I have the skill set that I can lead, and I can form these committees and be able to help our kids get the best education possible. I would also like to be right there on the groundbreaking part of it. It's an amazing opportunity to start that curriculum for our kids and be transparent with our parents, get our parents more involved, and improve on the transparency and support that we have been lacking for communities.
Well, I'd like to close by thanking all of you again for being here. I really appreciate you taking the time to do that, and I appreciate the moderator, as well as Shantae, the PTA, for organizing this event. I'd just remind you that I'm running for school board because I care about public education. I think it's extremely important, not only for our students but for our communities. I think it's the foundation upon which our democratic society is built. So what happens even if we don't have students actually in the schools really matters for us as a community. I believe that I have, again, some unique skill sets and experiences that can contribute to the formation of our new school district in positive ways. As a teacher in the classroom, I love learning, and I love helping others learn, and so I understand the value and importance of that. As a leader, I prioritize collaboration, and I prioritize listening, and I prioritize building the shared vision, and I know how to do that. As a statistician, I value the use of data, because I know that data represents people, and it's important to use data to inform our decisions and to not just go off of beliefs. As a policy analyst, I understand the need to improve systems, to see things from a systems perspective, in order to build sustainable and continuous systems that will build us towards continuous improvement. And finally, as a parent, I recognize the need to keep student learning at the heart and focus of everything that we do, because again, as I've said before, the core business of an educational system is teaching and learning. I think this is an exciting time. It's a once-in-a-lifetime. I don't pretend to have all of the answers, but I do know how to ask the questions. I know how to listen, and I know how to collaborate, and I think that's one reason, or some reasons, why I should be elected.
Let's give a huge thank you to the candidates. Very good luck to you, the voters, and who to decide to vote for. And remember, ballots need to be turned in November 4th at 8:00 p.m. The closest ballot box is at the Orem City Library and the Orem Senior Friendship Center. And the Orem Center Point Church will be the voting center on election day, and it will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If we didn't get to your question, make sure to stop by the candidate's booth and ask them directly. Everyone, travel home safely.